All right, very good. Welcome, everybody, to our meeting on October 2020. We'd ask the caller.
Commissioner Bunty.
Present.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Lambert.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
I'll put the invocation in the flag. Please. Father, we just thank you for this day that you've given to us, and we just thank you for all that you've given to us. We ask, Father, that you be with us through this meeting tonight. Ask that you be with our men and women of service overseas and at home, also with our first responders, Father. We ask all these things in your son's precious name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the people who stand unafraid, in the desert, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn.
Thank you, be seated. Okay. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? I have one or two. We're going to have a spokesperson from Mid-Michigan College come on. We'll add him on case one. Where's Kay? While we have new business, we'll just we'll just call that 1A. We already have a 1. Do that. Also, we'll be in closed session. We'll be also talking about strategies that we're be talking about litigation that we have, and the lawyer will be on the line, and he'll be coming at 5:30. So whatever happens at 5:30, obviously, we're paying a lawyer, so we're gonna have we'll stop the meeting and then go to the closed session so we can take care of that business. So everybody in YouTube land can understand that that time, we're gonna have to move when he comes on. Okay, is there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? An entertaining motion?
So move your approval agenda as amended.
Support.
Okay, moving supportive, any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We can't, we gotta have, we gotta have Zoom, so. Clerk caller.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes, sorry. Old habits are hard to die. Okay, public comments, anybody on Zoom wanting to make a comment, Matt?
I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay. Consideration of consent calendar, board members, communication recommendations from committees.
So move the accepted consent calendar.
Support.
Move supportive, any other discussion? All in favor signify. Oh, man, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lambert.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. All right, we have the administrators' report, which you'll just maybe may say one or two words, but most of it's gonna be through our agenda tonight, so.
Oh, yeah, but then I thought of additional stuff, but anyway, other than this other than this little Michigan Supreme Court opinion that we're dealing with, it's been pretty much business as usual around here. We've got staff working on various year-end budget tasks. Becky is making sure the bills get paid, she's also entering budget amendments. Kalen is doing the year-end report for Commission on Aging, and she's helping them with some supplemental information that's required by the Area Agency on Aging, which is, of course, a significant funder of our COA activities. Also, Kalen has begun work on soliciting quotes for our snow plowing for the year. Unlike me, she is not in denial about the season and the coming season, and this is a very important quality for our contract manager. The equalization staff have completed their fieldwork, and they're now crunching the numbers. They are ahead of where they were at this time last year, things seem to be going very smoothly there. Keegan does his annual report to you in April, so all of the work now is kind of building to that point. We have two positions that are posted, the Director of Veterans Services, that's the position that Rodolfo recently vacated. That position closes on October 19th. We have also listed the building official position that closes on October 16th. Tony Miller has been in an acting capacity in that position since the spring. He stepped in at a time of heavy work when that position was not filled, and he really helped us with projects getting us through the stay-home period and the work on preparing the building for our return. So that position is posted. He's gonna have to earn it fair and square, we hope will get applicants to consider. That's where that is. Finally, as a reminder, the Greshit Area Chamber of Commerce is hosting a candidate forum tomorrow evening. That begins at 7:00 PM. This is being done entirely electronically, as it was last time. It will include candidates in federal, state races, as well as some of our local races. Information about how to link into this event, I noticed it was not on the Chamber of Commerce webpage, I have contacted them and asked that it get posted there the most logical place for folks to look. So beyond this, my work, the work of the staff here is reflected in a number of the agenda items for this meeting, and also in a report that I assume Commissioner Lambert will provide about about the airport. So that's what I have for you.
Thank you. Commissioner reports. Doc?
The only thing I have is I'm very pleased that finally a court has restored constitutional order to the state of Michigan. As I maintained all along, governor's executive authority expired April 30th of this year. So that's all I have.
Thanks, I had two meetings, Parks and Rec meeting. You know, the parks go through a seasonal, I don't know, I don't want to call it a shutdown, because the parks actually, our parks are open all year round, but we go through kind of a seasonal slowdown in that we reduce our staff and we start moving towards like maintenance and taking care of things, you know, fixing things that are broken, and that's that's kind of the mode that we're in. And then there is a subcommittee right now that has been formed that is beginning to look at developing the guidelines for the grant that municipalities will be able to use, or excuse me, that municipalities will be able to apply for for their own park funds, and you know, we have some good information. I think I might have mentioned to everyone that Isabella County went through the same process, and they actually hired a company to do a lot of the research in terms of pros and cons of different ways to do it, surveying other municipalities and counties who had a program similar to what now we will be implementing. And they put it all together in a nice, you know, 100-plus-page report, and their director was kind enough to give it to me with a whole bunch of other information. And so they've got that to work with, and I'm sure that eventually what what they come up with will go to the the full Parks Board, and we'll probably tweak it, and then we will bring it to you for your approval or for your suggestions. And you know, that that process should move along fairly quickly. There's no urgency, you know, the the millages don't go into effect until the calendar year. And you know, the the understanding, I think, that most of us have and that the municipalities have is that we'll let some millage dollars build up, you know, before we start dispersing it. So you know, this is really something, so there'll be plenty of time for municipalities, you know, to come up with ideas or, you know, to apply. But this really is something that we're probably, you know, looking at at actually funding things in 2022, you know, after the millage is actually operated for a year, and then 2022 and beyond. As Tracy alluded to, you know, we've been having a lot of meetings with this ad hoc airport committee, which consists of some of the authority members, some of the people with institutional memory, and then some users, some pretty heavy users, one including one who was the former the former airport manager. We've had some good discussions, and Tracy has just drafted kind of the the outlines of of how we think the airport should be managed going forward. This will go to to the Airport Authority, you know, right now, the Airport Authority is still the the entity with legal and fiduciary responsibility over the airport. But they've expressed pretty clearly they would like, you know, the county to take on that responsibility, but but you know, the ball really starts with them. If they like it, they will have to approve that, and then it will come to us, and then we'll decide if if we like it or if we want some changes. And so that, you know, it's kind of like how Bill becomes a lot, might need to bounce back and forth a few times, because until we say, you know, this is the way we want to move forward, the the governance stays with the Airport Authority. So that's that's the probably the two big things that I've got going on.
Same.
So yeah, I've been to one meeting Fulton Township, and then I had a call from the village of Harrington about some blight stuff, I've talked to Tracy about it. Whether an incorporated village would be included in a township since they're in a township, and they would follow under the township rules or whatever, and so that we haven't got that figured out yet. Most of the windmills are up in the southern part of the county, New Haven, Newark, and their things are fine. And they go to have them run, and probably have the first of the year. Buildings coming up good in Middleton, they got it all sited and poured the floors the other day there.
Same.
Yes, I had a meeting with Michigan Works last Monday. I wasn't able to hear them, or they hear me, but at the end, we finally got connected. And basically, it's the contract is coming up for the five counties after 2021, and they have a special meeting that was to to ask me to be on that that meeting, because I would represent Greshit County in the contract. And also, they're looking at adding another commissioner. They would like to see us have two votes on the board, not just one. Out of the five counties, they go by, I believe, the population. And so we're the only county of the five that only has one vote. Isabelle County has two, and the rest of them have either two or three, I think it's three. And so they would like to change that, which is, that's a good move. So I I'm waiting now to hear more from them when we're gonna start, when we're gonna get it together or start on these meetings.
Hey, very good. I zoomed in on a Board of Health meeting while I was away. Things are going well there. We dealt during that meeting mostly with with Triple E, that's been, has broken out pretty heavily in Montcom County. And of course, that's eastern equine encephalitis. It's brought on by a mosquito. It can either transport itself into horses, and very rarely, but sometimes goes into humans. And so they've been doing, having spring events over there. I can't remember how many they've had, now two or three. And so they brought us up to speed on that. So that was basically the the talk of that meeting. We had a few updates on on Riverdale, and we had an update, just a general update on the COVID. So that was that, okay. We're at consideration of new business and 1A, and that is Mid-Michigan College. Is he on the on the screen there, Matt?
I'm actually here, I can't, you can't see my video, but
Okay.
And now you can.
There you go.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's a good thing that you can see me, but that's what I've got to work with, so.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to come and and present to you guys tonight. First of all, I want to thank you for all that you do. We are in a crazy time, I think everybody would agree, and you know, that puts stress on people, which for those that service the public, puts additional stress on them. So thank you very much for what it is that you do. I'm here as a service tonight to Mid-Michigan College, we do have two proposals actually on the November ballot. I'm not here to advocate, I, we just want to be good community stewards and make sure that everybody understands the pros as well as the costs that are associated with it. So I, if I can here, I'm gonna share a little PowerPoint presentation that that we have developed, and hopefully this answers at least some of your questions that you have, or provides some additional detail. Let me, of course, I already messed it up.
That was good, it came up for us.
It came up. I've got a little video in here that you gotta optimize the sound, and you know, you would think of how often you zoom, I'd be an expert by now, but stumbled through it a little bit. Oh, come on, start. Okay, so like I said, we will have actually two proposals, and I'll actually give you the language of what those are gonna actually look like on the ballot. Angie knows them very well, she's seen them probably many, many times. But anyway, the the nuts and bolts of this, really, annexation is just an invitation. We've been operating in Isabella and Greshit Counties for decades, and throughout that time, the college, those communities have been out district. They have paid an out district rate because they don't support the college operations with a millage. We are now officially proposing and asking, giving voters the choice as to whether they want to join or not. And this invitation applies to the school districts of Alma Ashley, Beale City, Breckenridge, Fulton, Ithaca, Mount Pleasant, Shepherd, and St. Louis. And there has been a little bit of confusion through some of these programs as to how this ties to the Greshit Isabella RESD. We have absolutely wonderful partnerships with them, in fact, both Jane Amsterberg and Doug Bush recently signed a letter to the editor today in support of the proposal, so we we have wonderful relationships, but the long and short of it is our ballot proposal has nothing to do with the GIRSD, whether it passes or not, it does not impact them at all, we are two separate entities. I wanted to show just, this is a quick three-minute video that gives, I think, a pretty good description of the process of annexation and helps explain some of the questions as to, geez, why, if you've been operating since 1969, are we not a part of your district? And I think this video will answer them. Let me know if you can't hear it, it's no sound for a few seconds here, and then it kicks in.
Annexation is a relatively simple concept, but to understand it, you first need to know about how community colleges in Michigan are organized. Each of Michigan's community colleges was chartered to serve a specific geographic area. Those areas can either be by county or counties, or by intermediate school district or school districts. But not all areas in Michigan have an in-district community college. Mid-Michigan College became Michigan's 25th Community College in 1965, when voters living in the Clare Gladwin RESD passed a millage to support college operations. That means that residents living in this area support the college with 1.2232 mills levied on their property taxes. In exchange, these residents pay reduced tuition prices and comprise the college's Board of Trustees to provide governance and oversight for the college. For Mid, in-district tuition is 40% less than out-district tuition. In 2020, 2021, tuition rates are $132 per contact hour for in-district students and $220 contact hour for out-district students. According to the Community College Act of 1966, a community college's district can expand through annexation, thereby offering the benefits of reduced tuition and college governance seats to new geographic areas. So a community college's Board of Trustees can invite communities that aren't currently a part of any community college to join their district. Mid's Board of Trustees have formally invited the Greshit Isabella RESD to join its service area. That requires that voters living in the GIRSD vote to accept annexation and the college's current millage rate of 1.2232 mills. If both ballot proposals pass, then residents in the GIRSD will join residents in the Clare Gladwin RESD and become part of Mid's in-district area. They will then receive the same benefits as the college's current in-district community members.
So that was a, just a quick little video, just explaining the process of annexation. For those that aren't as familiar with Mid, as a video alluded to, we were founded in 1965 as the 25th Community College in the state. We have two main campuses, one, which is our our main home service area is in Harrison. We also have a campus in Mount Pleasant, and that services actually more students and generates more credit hours than our Harrison campus. But it may actually surprise folks to know that we have locations that stretch as far as Newberry in the UP, all the way down to St. John's in Clinton County, over to the east in Bad Axe and Carroll, and over to the west in Big Rapids. In fact, Mid services students from 72 of the 82 counties in the state of Michigan. We have been in Isabella and Greshit Counties since 1969, so a long time, almost since the start. And our focus is on student learning and community connections, in particular, rural student learning. That is where our passion lies, we really want to provide access to students that that don't have access that other larger areas may have. This is just a real quick hitter on what our our budget currently looks like. Mid, as the video alluded to, we have the second lowest property tax millage rate in the state. For those that are curious, Jackson College actually has the lowest. And we currently service 1,100 students this fall from the Greshit Isabella RESD area. In addition, we service 80 dual-enrolled students from Alma, St. Louis, Breckenridge, Ithaca, Ashley, and of course, Mount Pleasant, Shepherd, and Beale City. So we're already servicing a significant number of students from that area. In fact, of our counties that we service, Isabella is number one, Greshit is number three. So we we do service a lot of students already. On the right is sort of the state average, they have always sort of envisioned this dream state of community college budgets being one-third each of property taxes, state aid, and tuition and fees. They come pretty close on average with state aid, of course, you know, being sort of on the lower end as appropriations dry up a little bit. Mid's is significantly different. We, most of our budget comes from tuition and fees, which makes it very susceptible to enrollment ebbs and flows, as enrollment tends to do. This was already covered really in the video, this is our current tuition structure, 132 for in-district students per contact hour, 220 for out, in-district students pay 40% less than our out district. Now, for those of you that are asking to yourself, what's in it for Mid? This will generate $3.11 million for Mid, however, if you factor in just this fall semester, for example, those 1,100 students, they're taking approximately 10,500 contact hours. If we were to move their current out district rate to the in-district rate, those students would collectively save just under a million dollars, about $924,000. So of the 3.11 that Mid would generate, nearly 2 million of that would go back to students through the the tuition reduction. In prep for our endeavor, we commissioned an economic impact study, and we're overall surprised by the results. Our graduates receive an 18.3% return on their investment, which is far better than a stock market return, or certainly a savings account return, and our graduates on average make 8,200 more per year than those with a high school diploma. So there certainly are benefits for the students, but there are also community benefits as well. Mid's current economic impact is $69 million on the Mid-Michigan region, and we support, through our operations, one out of every 43 jobs in the Mid-Michigan region. So really, Mid is is an economic engine for the community. With increased enrollment, which we would expect from lower tuition, this would only go up, further supporting the business and the communities where they reside in. Just a couple of other interesting nuggets. Mid has trained over 450 healthcare professionals, just in the last three years alone. These are your nurses and certified nurses assistants and subbotumists, medical assistants, all the areas that work in healthcare, Mid has is the primary trainer in this area. And the good news is those students tend to stick around, 4,300 Mid alum live in the area, and they generally tend to live and contribute and and have families and buy houses and things of that nature. Of course, we do have thousands and thousands of students that transfer to universities all over the country, but CMU and Alma College are two of our biggest partners, and we're proud of those partnerships that we have in them. Our elections are completely open, there's no reserved spots by county. So for those that might be interested in in determining the future of Mid, you can run for the election, there are seven spots, and they're all open. Same commission economic study found that every $1 taxpayer spent, they received a $5.50 return. And if anybody happens to be in the market for a college and they'd like to buy one, our value was placed at 519 million, including added income from our graduates and societal savings from health and crime. And the study commissioned, it was by MCEMSI, if you're interested in looking it up. Mid-Michigan College creates a significant positive impact on all business community and generates a return on investment to its major stakeholders, which includes students, taxpayers, and society. One thing that I didn't mention there is the Future for Frontliners and the Reconnect Program. Those are both interesting intersections for annexation. For those that aren't aware, those are our scholarship-based programs that have passed the legislature, and the governor has signed them. The Future for Frontliners is for those that do not have a college degree previously, but have worked somehow on the on the front line during the COVID pandemic. The Reconnect doesn't have anything to do with COVID per se, but again, it's for 25 and older, for those that don't have a degree, so they can come back and retrain, because we know there's gonna be many positions that are gonna be lost as a result of the COVID pandemic. Looking at Greshit County right now, 20, approximately 23% of Greshit County residents have an associate's degree or higher. That means that potentially, there are 31,000 residents in Greshit County that don't have a degree. Of course, not all of them worked during the the COVID pandemic, but a significant portion of those would be eligible. And the fact that, it's not that if you're out district, you're not eligible, but the those two programs only reimburse up to the in-district rate. They would have to pay the difference between the out district rate and the in-district rate, which is about $2,100 savings for one year at full-time for every student. So those are both significant factors that could play a real role in Greshit County in the future in training the next generation of workforce. What's it gonna cost? That's the other big question we get, in addition to what are the benefits? Mid has, like I said, the second lowest rate, 1.2232 mills. That means for every $1,000 of assessed home value, not to be confused with fair market, assessed home value is one-half of that. But for every $1,000 in assessed, residents pay $1.2232 cents. In Isabella County, that works out to about $69 a year, based on the median assessed home value price. Greshit County, it works out to about 54, almost $55 per year in taxes that residents would pay to support Mid. Looking at it in a different way, if you if you, if a student attended 12 credit hours for both fall and winter semester for just one year, the savings that they would recoup between the out district and the in-district rate is more than 30 years' worth of taxable assessed value that residents would pay. This is what the ballot is gonna look like, this is the exact language. There are going to be two proposals, essentially, the first one is a is an ask, do you want to join Mid's district? The second one is, can we assess the 1.2232 mills? Both have to pass in the affirmative in order for annexation to occur. If Proposal 1 passes, and people say, yeah, I'd love to join the district, but Proposal 2 does not pass, because, yeah, no, I don't want to pay the taxes, annexation fails, so it's really an all or nothing type of situation. But it's a little bit different than what you're used to. If the RESD or one of the school districts puts on a millage increase request, there's only one question. This one will actually have two, and annexation has not occurred in the state of Michigan for decades. So I I just want people to be familiar with what they're gonna be walking into when they head into the booth in November. I know I covered this really quickly, and it's a little bit data-heavy, but if you do want some additional information, you can find it likely at midmish.edu/annexation, or you can email me directly at friendsofmidmish@gmail.com, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have, or anything that you need clarification on. That being said, I will turn it over for questions, if anybody has any. And I apologize, I I tend to talk fast.
Any questions?
Scott, I've got a question, you know, and full disclosure, I'm a huge proponent of community college, you know, I mean, like, had taught the class in Ithaca that every senior taught took in terms of preparing them for the future. terms of preparing them for the future. But, you know, I look at the numbers, and first of all, based on what I'm calculating, a student, even if the millage passes, they would still be able to fully take advantage of the American Opportunity Tax Credit, right? So, because tuition's still for in-state, if you're 12 credits a semester, that's 24 credits, and what would, excuse me, in-area tuition? What's in-area tuition right now? It's about 125 bucks or 120?
132, yeah. Ours is 132.
Okay, so it wouldn't necessarily water down the impact of the American Opportunity Credit, which I think is a good thing, because otherwise we're kind of giving up, you know, free federal money.
Sure.
Paying for it with local money. But my other question is, so this should offset, and maybe this is the intention, I guess, this is my question, is so I do the numbers, and about 2 million of this is going to replace, you know, essentially subsidize tuition for our residents, you know, for our community college students. And then there's an additional million in round numbers. Is there an earmark for that? Is there a plan for that? Or is it just really to fill holes in, you know, what could be, you know, the uncertainties, the vagaries of state funding?
Sure. Well, I mean, I think that's a very valid and fair question. We have actually been prepping with our investment into Grashut County. This, we were supposed to be aiming for this fall and actually got pushed back to next fall for, due to COVID reasons. But we're actually going to be starting a dual enrollment program at Alma High School in fall of 2021. In fact, I emailed them this, today, this morning, asking, hey, let's get back on the road and start that program. So what that means is we'll set up an actual site at Alma High School, and area residents will be bused in, their school districts will pick up the transportation, or, you know, they can come on their own. But every one of those classes is also open to any community member. All of our classes are open. Anybody can take them. So we're investing in a location down in Grashut County to make, because transportation is such an issue.
Right.
Easier for those students. Now, the other thing, this is, we haven't received a grant yet, but we have applied for a grant that will allow us to install infrastructure in all of our extended sites, including Alma High School, that would allow our, and our main campus here, that would allow us to sort of beam back and forth classes, theoretically opening up our entire course taxonomy to any resident that is within, you know, earshot of doing that. So we have already started to invest down in Grashut County. Those residents have been loyal to us for a number of years. And certainly, as we, all the money goes into the general fund, so there's nothing ever really earmarked, this much goes to Mount Pleasant, this much goes to Harrison, this much goes to our extension sites. But our long-term plans, we would hope to invest more in Grashut County. We are trying to do that more and more, even with industry. For example, Central Michigan Manufacturers Association, there's 21 Grashut County employers that are part of that membership. We house that on our campus, and we do that because of the tie to the talent pool and the information shared between industry and education, which isn't always clear, to make sure that we're training students in a way that your employers want them to be trained. Healthcare and manufacturing are the two largest industries in Grashut County, and those are the ones that we're focusing on training, so you have the appropriate talent necessary to continue operations and expand operations. So to answer your question, there's nothing that's ever earmarked per se, but we've already started with an eye on expanding Grashut County, whether this passes or not. And passage would almost certainly lead to future expansion as well.
That's great. You know, I mean, we, we had, you know, the early college program at Ithaca, but, you know, one of the challenges was, you know, those kids had to get up to Harrison, you know, and it just, you know, it really is a, is a big ask. And even, you know, for some of our kids to get to, or some, you know, some of our young adults, you know, who are also balancing employment and education, even, you know, to get to Mount Pleasant campus, you know, yeah, if something was available, especially if you're living down in Fulton, you know, a lot easier to get to Alma than it is to get to the Mount Pleasant or Harrison. So that's good to hear. Great, thank you.
Actually, it's interesting you mentioned Fulton, because we actually have opened, like I said, an extension campus in St. John's. Our hope is to provide anybody really up and down the 127 corridor, from St. John's all the way up to Harrison, reasonable access within, you know, 15 minutes of driving so they can get there. And with the installation of our technology, if we do get that grant, theoretically opening up all the courses we offer to all of those residents.
Which now teachers are used to doing anyway, instructors are used to doing anyway. A lot of times, they're going remote, so, okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, we actually have 24 dual enrolled students right now from Ithaca High School, so.
Any other questions? All right then, Scott, we thank, thank you for your presentation. Given us your time.
Yep, thank you very much, and everybody stay safe.
All right, thank you. The dissolution of the building authority, and I think Tracy's going to have that.
Yes, I've prepared a memorandum for you to review on this issue. This, this creature, the statutory creature, was created by the county commissioners back in the 60s to help facilitate funding and funding oversight of some projects. I listed some of the projects that it was involved in in the memorandum that I submitted to you. I also provided you a copy of the body's Articles of Incorporation, the act under which it conducted its activities. The life of this thing was said to be until the last payment on the last project was made. My paraphrasing, not the actual language. That has in fact occurred, and I've verified, I've been able to verify that that occurred. And as I've indicated in my memorandum, building authority member Craig Zeiss approached me about, hey, it's time to dissolve this thing based on the, what's indicated in the articles that is to be its life and its purpose. So the question for you is, should you go ahead and dissolve this thing? I've also indicated in my memo that exactly what the process is for doing that is not clear, certainly not mentioned in the statute. And if you want me to go to that, go that route, I'll have to do a little more investigation about how it happens. As I also indicated in my memo, however, I consulted with our legal counsel, Dave Stoker, and he's not really sure. I mean, he can confirm that the statute does not indicate how these things are dissolved. He did raise the issue though, because as you know, he's a legal counsel for a number of counties and has a good cross-section of experience and perspective. He indicated that many counties just keep these things alive or keeps them on the books, clearly dormant, but they can be brought back to life when or if there's another project or another purpose for the building authority. He indicates there's no downside, no upside, just no downside though, to just letting this thing continue to live. And I, given that there is some discussion, and will be more discussion about maybe building a jail in our future, within the next maybe eight to 10 years, I think it could be useful to keep this thing on hand as an alternative for the funding and the funding authority. I offer you then the recommendation, it's not a particularly strong recommendation, but a recommendation nonetheless, that you just go ahead and keep this thing alive, but dormant. I would draft a resolution for you to look at at your next meeting and hopefully approve. And I would deal with, you know, who the members are and so forth, everything that I've indicated in the second-to-last paragraph in my memorandum. So that preliminary question is thumbs up or thumbs down for this thing? A second question is something that I'm seeking, is every project that the building authority did, it created a bank account. And with the bank account came checks. And because all of the projects are done, I would ask that the treasurer ensure that these accounts have been closed with the banks and that these unused checks be destroyed. So, because it's clearly a security issue to have these things just sitting in a box when there is no current or future use for them. So question number one is, keep it alive or not? I would be for keeping it alive.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't cost anything anyway.
Makes sense.
The way I read the attorney's opinion, that's what he's saying also.
Makes sense. Anybody else?
No, I thought the same thing. I thought, you know, if there's, if there's absolutely no downside, and if we have no, as long as we don't maintain any accounts, I think it's fine.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah, okay. Well, then I'll entertain a motion that we would approve keeping the building authority in place.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? All in favor, I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, may I have a second motion authorizing the, to ensure that these accounts are, these bank accounts are closed and instructing that the checks be destroyed?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we destroy the checks and close the accounts.
I'll second it. You just beat me to it, Jan.
Pardon?
You beat me to it, I was going to say something.
Support it. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, I ask the clerk, when she's ready to call the roll.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Next, we have increased per diem for planning commission.
Mr. Chair, the board, I included in your packet a request penned by Mark Raycraft, a planning commission member. I've communicated with the chair of the planning commission, and he writes at her request and is authorized to speak for the planning commission. They are asking that their per diem, their meeting per diem, long at the rate of $30 per meeting, be increased to $50 per meeting. I provided you a partial chart showing what the per diem is or are for other boards and commissions that do the work of our county. And you can see that there's a mix for no reason that anyone I know can explain of $30 and $50. I want to make very clear that when I list the board of commissioners per diem, that is what the boards per diem was up until, what, two or three years ago, when the board for itself eliminated per diem and instead went with a flat annual rate. I did want you, as a basis of comparison though, to have the per diem rate that was authorized for your meetings prior to the change in your system. It is my recommendation that this board increase the per diem for the planning commission to $2.50 per meeting.
I'll make a motion that we increase the planning commission board up to, from $30 to $50 a meeting.
Support. Who's supported? Do we have any questions?
Is there any reason why we shouldn't bring the Parks and Recs Committee to the same amount?
Right, you know, Chuck, I agree.
Same question.
I do wonder if we just really want, you know, rather than do these piecemeal, and it does remind me that, you know, probably at some point, we also want to look at, I know, you know, there's kind of a calendar to when we look at, you know, pay increases or inflation increases or cost of living increases or whatever you want to call it. And typically, you know, it waits until, you know, contracts are negotiated, but then we need to make decisions about, you know, people who aren't represented by a union and elected officials and all that good stuff. But kind of along this, and I just, kind of where I'm going with that, is I just do all those at one time, along the same lines. I agree with Chuck, you know, you know, why don't we just make kind of the standard for county boards $50?
The only downside to doing that this evening would be that that has not been subject to a meeting notice. The agenda only indicates planning commission.
All right, I'm going to ask Jan if she wouldn't mind amending her motion to include the mall.
I would like to amend my motion and restate that to, I'll make all of the county boards $50 per diem.
Support.
Who's supported? Any other question?
I thought Tracy said you couldn't do that because it wasn't on the agenda that way.
I'm simply pointing out that an increase for the others has not been subject to notice, that the agenda only provided notice of the possible discussion of an increase for the planning commission. You know, you can go either way on that, I just want to point that out to you.
Right, I think that's an important point that Tracy makes, I think, in our particular case, because we would be increasing, we'd only be increasing per diems. I think it'd be far less controversial if we, if we cut a bunch of them. We'd probably have some board members, you know, picking up the phone and calling us and saying, why are you cutting my per diem? But I think in this case, really, we're just kind of bringing a couple up that have been lagging.
Right.
That brings them all up then, right?
Exactly, and that was, yes, I think we're on, we're on solid ground here.
Yeah, I'd like to call for the motion.
Ask that, the clerk to call the roll on the motion.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. All righty, very good. Okay, I think that's all of it.
Mr. Chair, although we had in, perhaps we could confirm if Alan Vanderlon is indeed tuned into the meeting. I do see his name listed here as a participant. If that's the case, and if it, then you could, hey, Alan, then you could consider just going ahead and beginning this issue now, rather than interrupting the discussion with Tom in about 12 minutes.
Yeah. Well, okay, I hate to call, just hate to hold Tom for, if, I'll do, I'll say this. If, if the board feels that the discussion with the animal control officer is going to take more than 12 minutes, then we will hold it. If you don't think it's going to take that long, we'll have Tom first and then go right into the.
I don't think it'll take that long. I just have a few things I'd like to talk to you about, Tom.
Yeah, let's get Tom out of the way.
Yeah. Hello.
By way of reminder, yeah, by way of reminder, Commissioner Bunting was posing a number of questions about the animal control operation, both, that implicated both history and statute. So we arranged to have Tom attend this meeting. He was unavailable at the last meeting. He was off, I don't know, pretending to hunt or something, but he's here tonight. Commissioner Bunting and all commissioners are prepared to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, Tom, where I had a concern was, for some reason, I'm hearing a lot around me where people are calling and they want to bring the cats to you or the dogs, and that you no longer take cats, is what I'm hearing. And so there's, there's a couple of issues. One is, is that there is, I'm seeing and I'm hearing animals that are being thrown out on the side of the road, or out on, what I saw on the highway, a cat. And then I went up and saw a friend of mine, she said, go get it, I'll take it. So I went back to get it, it was already gone. I don't know if it was killed or what, but it was on the side, but.
We do take in a tremendous amount of cats, and we still do. We limit though, the number of cats in there at a certain time, a particular time. So we'll only have up to three cages of cats at a time. So we have people on waiting lists, and then we'll give those people a call back and have them bring in their cats when we have room. In the past, we used to take them all in at, all the time, but unfortunately, what happens then is you end up euthanizing a lot of cats because you can't take in that many. So we kind of changed our procedures and policies, and so we have three cages of cats. When those cats and kittens are adopted out, or we've got to move, we'll include other cats in.
Yeah, this one lady just had, her cat had baby kittens, and, but what they do, they put them down. It was her understanding that you don't take them, so they just got rid of them.
No, we.
And that's the one thing I hated to see. I thought, I thought.
But we also educate people too, as far as low-cost spain and neutering clinics. But we also educate people too, as far as low-cost spain and neutering clinics as well. Get that mama cat fixed to where she's not having all those babies and they're not having to visit us all the time.
Yeah.
So we we kind of push them that way as well.
Yes. Yeah, there's just been a lot of, lot of, like I know another person that had a dog, wanted to get it, didn't have the money to get it neutered. And so she just gave it away and I I'm hoping somebody else got it neutered.
Yep. Right now, our adoption rates, we're in that ninety-eight and a half, ninety-nine percent adoption rate right now. So we're very, very good on this model that we have. And, you know, this way our shelter is not overrun, not full, not overwhelming. We've got a very good selection of animals out there and we're doing very, very well.
Yeah, see, I guess I'm confused about, we didn't want to kill our animals. We wanted to get them adopted out, but instead what's happening is people are killing them. I mean, if they can't get, can't get rid of them.
Sure.
I have one friend that's got like eight cats. I babysat their cats and their dog. And they have eight cats, but it's because people drop it off at their house.
Yep, and we try to.
And they have got them neutered, but at this point, they just have to get rid of them because they can't take.
Try to educate on the importance of spain and neutering. That's why we don't, don't have all those cats and kittens that are running around out there.
People just can't, especially now, cannot afford to do it. So that's where, because I've heard the animal group, they don't want to, they don't want to kill these cats. They don't want to, they don't want them put down. And so it's kind of a double standard. You're not putting them down, but we're not taking them. So what do you do with them? You just, you just eliminate them. I hate to see that. I mean, I like animals.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But so, but anyway, I'll get with you. The next time I hear something, I think what I'll do is I'll get a hold of you myself.
Absolutely. Give us a call. We're there. We'll give you, definitely love to talk with you. Take you around the shelter and that and show you, you know, but definitely if you ever have any questions, give me a call. Stop by, we're there and we'd love to show you around.
One of the other things I know that a lot of coyotes, I know St. Louis has gotten in, that's been coming into town. They've been getting the cats, so, but you know, that's kind of nature.
It is nature and they do, coyotes prey on cats, especially city cats. Coyotes are moving into the cities a lot and that that is one of the things that that happens with a free-range, free-roaming cat.
Somebody just found a dog and a bunch of puppies on the side of the road. But it's my understanding that they took it, I think, up to Mount Pleasant and dropped them off.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't receive those. We haven't had a puppy in our shelter.
Automatically just took them up there.
Sure.
Was in Grasha County, but, yeah, but they took them up there.
Ready.
Anyway, that's, that's all.
Go ahead, Chuck.
You mentioned three cages of cats. Approximately how many is that probably?
Usually three cages would be up to, say, twelve cats. Yep, we're talking litters, litters of cats and kittens. And so approximately twelve is a good number.
I would think kittens would be easy to get rid of.
Yes, you know, there's there's certain times of year, like right now, we don't have a ton of cats and kittens out there. So right now is a good time. Christmas time's a great time. But in the springtime, in that early fall, boy, there's, there's a tremendous amount of kittens out there at that time. So they're harder to get rid of during kitten season.
Um, is Gaines still taking animals?
They do. Yes, they are. They help us out tremendously.
Yeah.
And we help them out as well with spain and neutering of feral cats and that. We we have a fund set up to where we also help them out as well. So it's a, it's a good marriage.
I have to say, for a long time, I didn't see any cats or dogs on the streets in St. Louis. But I've been sitting outside in the evening and all of a sudden I see a cat. But I mean, but you know, one time we were overrun, we saw cats everywhere, dogs and cats and, I mean, chasing. It was out of control.
Prove that, absolutely.
It is, it is down.
Yes.
I've only seen one cat this summer, which is.
That's perfect then. That's perfect.
Thanks, Tom, for coming in. We've.
Tom, I got a quick question if I could. So how often, like, I'm just trying to figure out if this is a problem. So in the past week, have you turned anybody down that's wanted to bring an animal in because you're full? Or is this something that happens, I'm just trying to figure out how often this happens. Is something like in the past week or two, have you had to say, hey, no, no vac?
Yeah, right now, we 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 do not have any cats and kittens. And last week, we did have to turn a couple people down about bringing them in. But we've contacted those people through Facebook and through the phone. Hey, you can bring in a couple of them right now. We can take a few right now. So we adopted ours out last week, late last week on Friday, and so we're ready to accept some more. That seems to be a good model for us.
I hate to say this, not too loud, but I'm wondering if some of the people aren't taking their animals up to Mount Pleasant. Because everybody knows somebody in Mount Pleasant.
Yeah, yep.
They're getting rid of.
I know hats up there, Mount Pleasant, are, is quite full as well. So it is, it's not just a Grasha County, it's a, it's a whole state of Michigan problem. And so they're all, they all run the gamut of being full right now, especially with cats.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Tom. I appreciate it. All right.
Thanks, Tom.
Tom will be back in January with his staff. He will be doing his annual report to this board in January.
All right.
Just to remember to walk the back door?
Yep, got it.
Pretty will be leaving at five thirty.
Yeah, thank you. Make sure.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Thanks for getting on that.
Okay, then, some housekeeping. I'm going to ask the public if they have any additional comments, public comments. We're going to move into closed session.
I'm not seeing anybody making a comment.
All right, then I'll take a motion to go into closed session to, we're going to talk about a couple of different things. Litigation, that's before the county, and real property. So a motion to.
I'll move on closed session.
Or supportive. Other discussion? Ask clerk call roll.
Commissioner Lambrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes, all right.